Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, April 17th at 6:03 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here, thank you. And also, we politely request that if you have a cellphone, that you mute it, turn it to vibrate, or turn it off. And also, just a special note of housekeeping, as you noticed on entering the building, our community center repairs do continue. Tonight, we do have limited access to and from the building, so please bear in mind that should we have to leave the building in an urgent fashion, use the doors to this side. If you'd like to sneak out quietly, you can mind the path to this side. And we also have a very qualified member of our fire department at the back of the room here for your safety as well. All right? So, please keep that in mind. And when is this building going to be finished? Someday. As many of you know, this was a small project that became a big project on a building that is about 25 years beyond its original and intended life expectancy. If you can all stand and remove your hats and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code, Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. And as a reminder, under the Rosenberg's Rules of Order adopted by the city in 2012, there is no allotment of your time to another speaker. I don't have any speaker cards under oral communication, but if there's anyone interested in addressing the council on a consent item or something that is not on the agenda, please make yourself known. Not seeing any movement toward the podium, I will close oral communication, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus and a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
I just want to let you know that April 13, I did attend the Community Service Committee meeting that I'm part of for the LECO series. And there are two topics that we are working on. One is homeless and shelter for them. And also, one that I think is very important is that how to be more prepared for a natural disaster. We are trying to update the current policies and make them more inclusive for everybody, including people that they have animals on their properties. Also, we are working to inform and to get more information about insurance policies and how to make the people and be aware and so they won't have problem with underinsurance in the future. So, those two things are, we are working on it, and our next meeting will be in June in Sacramento.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Barnes?
A couple of things tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank our Public Works folks. We have two new projects that have come to completion. We have a bridge that we can all drive over, and we've got a great new road in front of our high school. So, thank you, guys. You did a great job. Keep up the good work. Secondly, signs are starting to pop up around the city for and against Measure C and supporting various candidates. I'd just like to remind you that we are a free and hopefully stay-free country with free elections. So, exercise your franchise to vote, but keep it civil. This is a very important election that we're facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Kind of along that same line, the signs that have been popping up, there are signs that are not in conformance with the city's political sign code, I guess you would call it. Am I saying that? Some regulations that the city has adopted that call for a maximum square footage of signs that I think is like eight square feet, two-by-four. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if there's anybody that wants to know specifically how big they're allowed to be and how many signs and like that, I noticed that Diane Dillon has a four-by-eight sign posted in at least one location in the city, and the Perez folks have probably half a dozen that are probably four-by-four. So, I don't know how the ordinance addresses enforcement of that, but certainly the campaigns of the respective candidates should be notified that they are not in conformance with the code. It's no effort to censor anybody, it's just we have an ordinance, and allowing signs that are not in conformance with that ordinance gives it tacit approval, so the next election cycle that comes along, we have more signs, and it defeats the reason that we had the ordinance in the first place.
I have the dimensions at my desk, I don't remember what they are, but...
Yeah, I should have written it down, but upset.
We'll get it.
Put it up on the website.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing tonight.
All right, I have a few items to what Councilmember Barnes mentioned. The Berry Street Bridge is open and flowing. Pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars can now pass safely, thank you very much. An update, because I know I've been asked multiple times regarding the Napa County Fairgrounds, the JPA, and the potential property transition, those discussions are still in effect between the City of Calistoga and the County of Napa, and we'll bring you information as it's appropriate. We have a community forum tomorrow evening. The topic is dispensary, recreational, and/or medical. It's at 6:00 PM in this building. And again, this is the very informal process that we use when we have issues and concerns coming before the community to offer the opportunity to ask a lot of questions and have some dialogue back and forth. And are you going to address the siren test in your comments, or shall I? All right, so we did conduct the siren test, as many of you know, as a result of the firestorms in October. We have concerns about letting people know or making them aware that they should turn on their cellphones if it's the middle of the night, their TV, their radio, et cetera. We no longer have a siren in town, so we did conduct a test this past, last week, sorry, and those tests will continue so that we can ensure that we have a system that covers the entire city limits and beyond for our friends and neighbors just over that dotted line on the map. With that said, we're going to move on to City Manager's Report, and I think you are going to start with a very important introduction, but you may have lost your audience.
Yeah, I apologize, but you know, when baby's hungry, baby's hungry. If you all know, I've been out the last couple of weeks, my wife and I welcomed baby number three to the family. So, Eden Lee was born on March 25th. She was eight pounds, 11 ounces, 21 inches, and a long and big baby. She's 97th percentile in everything. So, I hope we have a basketball player, a football player, and here they are. So, my wife, Kira, holding baby girl Eden.
Come on up, guys.
Yep, come on up. If you don't mind, Mayor, can I meet him at the podium?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
All right, I don't get to stand at the podium very often, but for those of you who don't know, this is downtown Gabriel Brown.
This is Benson-Levy Cutie Pie. And then we have newborn Eden Lee Bumblebee.
Congratulations.
First there, she seemed like she was a little bit horrified to be at the podium, but she's calmed down.
She looks, she can be ready to sing into it, right?
And then, of course, my wife, Kira, who you all know as well.
Who really did all the hard work, let's be honest. Well, congratulations.
So, I just wanted to take a chance to introduce Eden. Thank you all for giving me the time off to spend some time with family, and you'll probably have to excuse them, I'm going to encourage them to leave and not stick around for a few hours during the meeting, so thank you.
Well, actually, if you can keep her here for item number nine, nobody's going to yell at you if you're holding a baby.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to hold the baby for item nine?
Congratulations, Kira, as well. Boys, enjoy your baby sister. If I were you, guys, I'd get out of here, quick.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, Kira. Yeah, absolutely, keep going.
And then, if you don't mind, one other item, just something just to be aware of that we're looking at. Pioneer Park, last year, if you remember, we installed some new grass. There's been issues with the grass and how it takes in the park. Obviously, Pioneer Park's one of our premier parks in town. We want to use it for concerts in the park, as well as the various rentals, activities that go on. So, we're looking at some other options, possibly even, should we install sod, artificial turf, sod, something different that will last longer and really serve the residents who use that park pretty profusely during the summertime. So, more information coming down the pike, just wanted to let you know, be aware of that.
My understanding on that is one of the best ways to keep the grass growing or to get it to grow is to cut all the trees down so the sunlight can get to it, but that's not really an option.
We would prefer to avoid that option.
Okay, thank you, as long as that's not one of the items on the list. Anything else on City Manager's Report? All right, proclamations, presentations, and awards, we don't have any this evening. I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless an item is requested to be pulled.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you. There are no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to general government. Item number five, consideration of a resolution establishing objectives in the appointment of a city council subcommittee for the fiscal year 2018-2019 Community Enrichment Grant Program. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this item will be City Manager Feek. Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, you see this item every year as part of the budget process. Each year, we carve out about $30,000 to provide as grant money to various nonprofit organizations which serve Calistoga residents. We have criteria that we've used in the past that's shown in the resolution, services provided to the other community, to youth in the community, something that enhances the appearance of the community, expanding services to members of our Hispanic community, and also to various efforts to provide community-specific environmental enhancements. We've been very successful in the last several years in divying out money. Part of this resolution is also appointing two councilmembers to sit on the ad hoc committee to determine the grants. Once we proceed with this, Kathy will make an announcement, we'll publish it in the papers, let everybody know that, hey, we have this money available, they fill out the application, those come back to city council for a recommendation of approval from the ad hoc committee. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Clarification, Dillon, these are generally for smaller grants, and this is on top of the significant funding we already set aside as a city for youth programming, senior services through the Up Valley Family Center, immigration services through the Up Valley Family Center. So, it's not just $30,000.
As well as the legal services.
And legal services.
Correct. This is just a small portion of money that we provide for various services in the community as part of the budget. But when you add up all the different contracts, it's several hundred thousand dollars that we provide for these kinds of efforts. This is just the grant program.
All right, thank you. So, you need two volunteers for this, correct? And I think we've had two who've served on this for quite a while, if they're still interested in doing so?
Don't mind doing it?
Please do.
All right, so then I will propose for the council's consideration approving the resolution as presented with the inclusion of Councilmember Lopez Ortega and Councilmember Kraus to serve on the ad hoc committee. I will make that motion.
Second it.
We'll take a second from Councilmember Barnes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of an installment sale agreement, trust agreement, and escrow agreement in connection with the issuance and sale of certificates of participation for the purpose of refinancing the costs of water and wastewater system improvement projects, approving an official statement and related matters. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented. Taking us through this will again be City Manager Feek. Dillon.
The title that you just read, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, that's the very specific title we have to include. This is debt refinancing. So, council, as you know, we've been talking about this as part of our water wastewater rate study for several months, but what you have before you tonight is staff and our consultants. I'll go ahead and introduce them right now, James Waziniak from Jones Hall and Wing C. Fox from Urban Futures, who have helped the city prepare for these debt refinancing, if you will. I'd like James to do the presentation, I've asked him to keep it no more than five minutes, but I'm sure he can get it done sooner if needed because we've been talking about this quite a bit. But we appreciate you being here tonight, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thanks, Dillon. Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, the project for you, the refinancing, has been one staff has been working on, we've been working with Dillon and Gloria at the city for over a year now, and we, again, let me introduce myself, James Waziniak at Jones Hall. We're Bond Counsel and Disclosure Counsel to the city. Wing C. Fox, to my left, is at Urban Futures, who's the financial advisor to the city. So, this team, and as well as others not here tonight, have been working to put together this refinancing for both the water and the wastewater enterprises. As you know, on the water side, there's three outstanding obligations, two of which will be refunded as part of this refinancing, and the third of which is with a USDA, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, very low interest rate goes out through 2051, so we're going to leave that in place. Then on the wastewater side, again, there's three existing obligations, we'll be refunding two as part of this refinancing. The third one is a loan from the state of California, which will mature in 2023, so it didn't make sense to include that one in the refinancing. So, again, as the mayor said, it's an installment sale agreement between actually the city and the Facilities Corporation of the city, of which the council serves as the board. So, installment sale agreement pursuant to which the project is reconveyed, the trust agreement, bonds will be issued, and it all amounts to savings, and I'll let Wing C. give you the current estimate on the exact savings numbers. But the point, just from the legal perspective, we're consolidating some of those outstanding obligations into a single water wastewater refunding obligation here, and we're not extending maturity. So, that's important to know. We're going to maintain the amortization, we're going to pay off the principal over time, not extending maturity, and again, I'll turn it over to Wing C. on where we are on the numbers.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So, the market, as you know, in the beginning of the year was quite volatile, it's hung in there, which is great, still at historic lows. So, as of April 5th, we are seeing 1.5 million in total debt service savings through the maturity of the bonds and the loans, which is a net present value of 811,000. Said another way, that's 9.1% of refunded par, which is well above the 3% threshold that you passed last time with the debt policy. So, with that, it's a true interest cost of about 3.19%. And in terms of the rating, I have good news to report. We did hear from S&amp;P today, and these bonds did receive a rating of an A-, which is great, seeing as now we're actually taking it as its own credit, it's not a USDA loan or a CSADA conduit loan. So, that's good news. In terms of timing, we're looking at marketing the bonds next week and pricing them the following week, closing a couple of weeks after that. So, NMA.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmembers, questions? As you guys know, this was a priority and part of our strategy in terms of helping to reduce our water and wastewater burdens and expenses.
I just want to make sure I got this right. I am certainly not a bond specialist. We are taking approximately $8.8 million of existing debt in four different instruments. We're consolidating that into one instrument, which will be a certificate of participation, is that correct?
Correct.
But we will keep the maturity dates of the four instruments that we are consolidating within this big box, so they will mature as they would have matured during the life of the whole box.
Yeah.
I'm using, I'm sure, weird derms, but that's how I think of it.
You're right, because we're moving from four instruments to one, we will have a single maturity on that instrument, but we will be blending, if you will, the existing four maturities such that we're not extending any of them, they all kind of become blended into that single maturity. Has the principal would have been amortized, so will it be amortized as part of the single combined instrument.
Okay, then, as I read this document that I don't think is in the packet, it shows very clearly that at certain dates, which would have been the original end date of an instrument, the interest payments and the principal payments take a precipitous drop in that year within this new box, and that goes through the life all the way up to 2045.
Right, so that sort of corresponds, as things fall off, we still have one maturity, but it will sort of fall off over time as you indicate, you know, corresponding to the existing obligations being taken out.
Okay, because my concern had been, under the former four instruments, we had paid off a lot of interest, and now we were getting to the point where we were really putting big dents into the principal, and I thought it would be kind of silly to walk away from that. But this satisfies that, to me anyhow, it satisfies that argument that I had in my head. And the net result is we save about $56,000 a year over the life of the box.
Right, that's current, kind of current interest rates, I think that's where we are. We'll see when we actually price it.
And that is at a projected rate of 3.19.
Planted.
Are these bonds tax deductible or tax-free for state or federal, or not?
That's correct, they are tax exempt for both federal and state.
So, I could go out and buy one and put it somewhere and tax exempt. So, I can get 3.19 tax exempt by buying one of these.
That's right, double tax exempt, federal and state.
Double tax, okay. All right, thank you very much.
We'll find you at Rotary to make up, don't worry. We'll get you.
That's a pretty good interest rate.
Yeah, it is. I have a couple of questions. Now, as the principal is paid off on these various instruments that we have, does that mean that on a certain date when we would have, let's say, one of the water and sewer bonds paid off, that from, not only is the principal that we would have paid at that point paid off, but does that mean that our annual payment then goes down, or is it a steady payment all the way through?
So, the way the bonds are currently structured, it's the same amortization, so the savings will vary from year to year since the different loans have different final maturity dates. So, the average is just taking the whole, all of this annual savings and averaging that number to 56,000.
Okay.
So, and right now, the structure of the debt is, you're saying that there's a lot of debt up front, and then it drops after that.
Okay, and the 56,000, so we wouldn't necessarily realize the 56,000 every year?
Correct.
It'll be, what, a maximum of 56,000, or it's, you're saying it's an average, so some years we may save more, some years a little bit less, is that...
Yes, and I think at this point, we'd like to retain some flexibility to discuss with the city manager the exact ideal structuring, because there's a few ways to do it, and making sure that we're generating the most savings overall, but also looking at that annual savings, looking at the whole debt structure, making sure that it makes the most sense for the city.
Okay, now, you're saying that our A- is a good grading, or is that based on a city this size, or how does that work?
It's based on the fact that there has been some subsidy in the past, and looking at the credits historically versus going forward and the strength that the rate increases have brought to the credit. Were it not for those rate increases, we definitely wouldn't be seeing an A-category rating. So, it is good, because this is the first time that the city is actually, it's the city of Calistoga, rather than, again, using another conduit issuer or using a USDA loan.
Okay, so, the rating is what it is because of our rate increase that we have passed that ensures that the requirements for the loan will be met, but it's possibly not as good as it could have been because maybe we weren't, we always made our payments, folks, but the requirements for reserves didn't meet the requirements for the previous instruments. Is that kind of a shorthand there for how that works?
Exactly, and this rating is not forever. So, right now, they're looking at an A- stable outlook, their outlook is two years, so if things improve in two years, then you could look for an upgrade and vice versa.
Okay, it wouldn't necessarily be worth refinancing this then in two years, because I think, you know, I could see it, some people refinance their house every two years, and, you know, with the refinancing, I don't, but, you know, the refinance costs really start stacking up, so.
And the reality is, is we weren't able to refinance in the past, and nobody would touch our debt.
Exactly, exactly, because of the position that we were in. How much better could this 3.19 possibly have been? Would you speculate on that?
I think I'd have a different job if I could answer that accurately. So, it's really, really hard to say where the market, the rates will come in. I think that's part of the reason why we do want to move forward and to move quickly, because the market rates are good right now. It's hard to say, you know, in May, there's going to be an FOMC meeting, they might increase. So, we do want to get into the market, like I said, it's good right now. I think this is, you know, the more conservative outlook, but, you know, hopefully, we can do better, but, you know, hard for me to say.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the council?
Gary, to answer a couple of your questions that I just happened to have here, the current range on those four instruments ranges from 5.125 to 4.25. So, on part of it, we're saving more than 2% or 40% of the interest.
Very important, yeah.
And on your other question, the first breakpoint occurs between 2025 and 2026. In 2025, we will pay 733,000 principal and interest, and our savings that year will be 58,005. The next year, 2026, our principal and interest drops to 549,000, 550,000, or 180,000 less. But we still get a savings of a little bit more, almost $60,000.
Yeah, you know, I...
You can see this blended thing coming into focus, and it drops precipitously, and there's three points within that box that goes out to 45.
I appreciate your diligence in going through that, and I knew you would. I started going through it, fell asleep twice, and the second time, when I woke up, the dog was licking my face, so I figured it probably had gone into it enough.
And to answer your question on refinancing, we actually wouldn't be able to refinance for at least 10 years.
Okay.
And if anyone's interested, as with the release of the staff report last week, the 125-page document, if you'd like to read it, is available on the website, or we have a copy here. We didn't think it prudent to print a whole bunch and leave them in the back, so. And council, any other questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions of the experts in the room? I don't want you to ask them questions and go through that math exercise again. All right, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for further consideration. James and Wing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome back to Calistoga. Stay in town, spend some money.
This is my favorite town, I try to vacation here every year.
Is that why we got an A-? Thank you.
We should have got an A+ then.
Have a nice evening, thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven, consideration of a resolution adopting city council goals, objectives, and priority projects for fiscal year 2018-2019. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented. Taking us through this is City Manager Feek. Dillon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we wait for the projector behind us to open up, on March 19th of last month, the council and several staff, we met over at the fire station to go over our annual goal setting. As part of our, it's part of our budget process, but generally, this is a document that... As part of our, it's part of our budget process, but generally, this is a document that the city council provides, which gives, in some cases, broad, in other cases, much more specific direction for city staff. This helps me give information to staff to help prepare our workload for the upcoming year, particularly as we prepare the budget document. What you have in front of you tonight are, essentially, it's the draft, goals and objectives for this upcoming fiscal year, 2018, 19. We've tried to show it in just a redline version. Excellent, thank you. In a redline version to show where things have changed. As part of your agenda packet, we also published the redline version, so anybody who's on their smartphone or watching at home can certainly see the draft, but also see where the changes have been made. And if council would mind, would not mind, I'll go through really quickly and speak to the changes and the goals. I'm not going to read over each thing individually, but just highlight some of the key changes, and you can see the differences on your own. Hope it's not going to reach from here, so if you could change. So on goal number one, maintain and enhance economic vitality of the community and the financial stability of the city. I think the council was pretty clear that this continues to be one of the most important things. And even though the goals aren't organized and a matter of priority, goal number one, to be maintain and enhance our economic vitality as a community, and the financial stability of the city is always overarching themes that we have. And you can see the various changes as proposed. Nothing significant, just minor modifications towards.
I gotta disagree with you there, because we have struck the word encouragement.
Your mic, sorry.
Okay, I disagree with you, because the first objective, number one, we've crossed out the word encourage. And I think that's an important shift in what the council is looking to do. We, I don't think we are any longer looking to bring major projects into the city.
I would have to agree with Councilmember Kraus, and that was a significant part of our discussion on this. We're now, and I believe as we reported in one of the papers, we're tapping the brakes on commercial growth or hotel lodging growth, so that, you know, we're in a position now, and have established ourselves in a position for financial stability. Now, let's absorb what's happening from a commercial development standpoint, so.
You'll have to excuse me, I agree. I was going to address the, I'll call it the, a shift in perspective, if you will, on a priority project down below. So I misspoke. I believe Councilmember Kraus was very clear. Just for the sake of those in the room today who weren't here on-
Which is almost everybody.
On March 19th.
Yeah.
The discussion that we had around the goal, the objectives, and even the priority projects really was a matter of how do we prioritize our workload? And you'll see in tonight's agenda, there's other supporting documents on the agenda, other agenda items, which help us prepare to do that. But there was a good council discussion about this shift, which is, you know, do we encourage new development versus managing and evaluating the key private developments? As you get into the priority projects, Kathy, which is working? Perfect, thank you. Goal number two, which was adopt economic development measures and other incentives to promote beneficial new development businesses and job growth. We really changed this, struck the language, and said, we want to promote and support existing businesses. The council is very clear that as we have new commercial growth coming online, we want to pay particular attention to supporting those businesses that are here. In addition, we added number four as a priority project, which was support the long-term land stewardship of the Napa County Fairgrounds. That was really where the discussion on goal number one started to transition to changing what was the last goal on our document and moving it up to immediately following goal number two, which was address the community's housing needs. So one of the changes that the public would see now is, goal number seven, we've actually moved it to goal number two. And again, not that we're ordering them in list of priority, they're all important, but we wanted to make sure that it was listed on the same page right after maintain and enhance economic vitality of our community to now address the community's housing needs. You can see a couple word changes in the different objectives. In looking at the priority projects, which were a little bit more defined, continue to support rebuilding Calistoga rehabilitation efforts, home and CDBG programs, and also work with council ad hoc subcommittee to implement strategies that promote public and private Kathy, you'll have to excuse me, but I'm looking at a document which is not the same. It's in my packet. All right, thank you. I apologize, I had a document which was a printout which didn't have this exact items that you're seeing here behind me. Goal number three, consider deleting allowed commercial activities from, the next several goals that I'll go over, if you remember, let me backtrack myself a little bit. If you remember, when we had the discussion at the fire station, there was a lot of goals, strategies which the council discussed, but it was going to take a lot of time, a lot of effort, and what we had already had and discussed over the last year and a half with our ad hoc housing committee, which is comprised of the mayor and the vice mayor, but also a lot of discussions with city staff, a lot of document housing element planning, we already had a lot of information that had been put together as recommendations. And so what I asked of council is, can I go create a draft document and bring that back to city council for discussion and any deliberation? So what you're seeing here in the form of priority projects, number three, or number two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, are various items that we have discussed as an ad hoc housing subcommittee, various things that have been identified in our housing element, various things that staff has talked about for a while for your consideration. So I'll quickly go over those, just because this is the first time you're actually hearing these items. Number, goal number two, priority project number two, consider deleting allowed commercial activities from appropriate residential zoning districts in order to maximize inventory of sites available for housing development. Priority project number three, reclassify appropriate potential development sites to residential land use classifications or higher density land use classifications. Number four, consider increasing qualifying income for inclusionary ownership housing units from 120% of area median income to 150% of area median income to facilitate development and increase feasibility of their purchase by households with sufficient income. Or five, modify the multifamily residential definition to allow detached units in order to provide more design flexibility. Or six, subsidize or defer connection fees for ownership units affordable to households with incomes less than 120% of area median income. Number seven, review and consider using 1.25 persons per household when calculating potential population for senior projects under the growth management system in order to create additional growth management allocations. Number eight, acquire suitable properties for residential development targeted to local employees and partner with developers to provide housing. So various strategies that the city has. In addition, one thing I'll mention, and we'll talk about this a little bit later as we get through our resource management system, is the city has even identified what we call housing opportunity sites. And Kathy, if you'd go to the, an image of the map for me, you know, when we show this picture, it identifies several pieces of land inside the city limits. And as the city has discussions with property owners, you know, property owners have rights, they're entitled to pursue developing their properties and using their properties according to certain standards, rules. But one of the discussions that we're constantly having is what would the city allow? What could go there? When developers come in with an idea and a kind of project, what kinds of development do we want to see? And so as part of our overall housing efforts, we've put together a map which shows sites, and could these be potentially used for housing projects? There are a lot of, you know, there's land in Calistoga to meet our housing needs. You know, a lot of these are going to have different infrastructure challenges. Some will have, you know, density issues, others might have proximity to a certain, you know, proximity issues. It could be a whole variety of things. Each individual parcel has its own opportunities and challenges with building housing. And I think Lynn and her staff has done a fantastic job trying to be nimble and understand, you know, how we could support the kind of housing we want to support. And I think Calistoga Vista, our most recent project, is a great example of a recent one. There are several other projects here in town as good examples. So unless council would like to discuss and deliberate on that specific one now, or if you'd like me just to continue on.
Well, I, when I read over the staff report, I was taken back by this particular section, because I may have failing memory from time to time, but I would have remembered some of this stuff. So, and then, when you take this and couple it with a couple of other agenda items on this agenda, I can see that there is a linkage going through these, that having it all on the same council agenda, one, it surprised me, but I also realized there was going to be some considerable angst amongst folks in town with changing housing densities, perhaps. So there's a couple of questions that I have in here, because I did ask someone that knows a little bit about the HUD numbers for AMI, which stands for area median, median income. And apparently, the HUD designation right now is 120%. We have said we want to move it to 150%, and I'm wondering how we get to do that if it isn't in the HUD regulations.
Lynn?
This refers to our inclusionary housing program. Right now, we have a minimum requirement for projects of certain size to provide a percentage of units affordable to certain households. It's entirely up to us as to where we want to peg that. And one of the things we talked about with the subcommittee is how difficult it is for households earning only up to 120% of area median income to afford one of these units, and how difficult it is for developers to provide them at a reasonable price. And so this is one of the strategies we talked about, and 120% of moderate income for a family of four is, tops out at 372,000 and a bit right now.
That would be purchase price?
I'm sorry, 109,200, and a purchase price of 372,225, which, you know-
If you can just restate that again, the family of four, at that rate-
At 120% of area median income would have a maximum income of 109,000 and a little bit. And then the maximum housing price would be approximately 372,000. So if you adjust those upwards, depending on how far you want to adjust them, it would help more families qualify for those inclusionary units, and would also help the developers close the gap and make those more affordable.
And the 150% would, two questions. Number one, it is our prerogative, but the information that I got about 120% was not accurate, that our prerogative is that we could move it to 150% without stepping on a landmine someplace.
120% is used in some funding programs, grant programs, but the inclusionary program is totally a creation of the city, and we can peg it to whatever percent of the project has to be affordable, whatever the maximum range is. And there's certain, you know, provisions under like state density bonus law. That's very strict.
Okay, now-
About what the maximum income-
We move this to 150%, that changes the income level for the family to 140,000 or something.
It's a 25% increase.
Yeah, I calculate for 160, but-
About 130 grand.
Yeah, 160 was 145,600, so yeah, it'd be about 130 something.
About 130, yeah.
About 130, and then the home value jumps up to what?
By about 90,000 more.
Yeah, 400, 460.
Okay.
I mean, again, not-
Yeah, it just helps more folks qualify.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm asking these questions here is because none of this came before the council before, the entire council. And I appreciate the work that the ad hoc committee did, just like the work that other had, ad hoc committees have done. So that was one of the questions. And I do remember that we did talk about identifying potential development sites and encouraging multifamily residential, and also acquiring suitable properties for residential development, which we have done. We just recently made a purchase of a small parcel adjacent to another one that we made, so I'm okay with that. Like I say, and I may develop some other questions here as other council members perhaps want to know more.
And coming out of the goal-setting session that we had, we did clarify that there would be some modifications brought back for the council's consideration, and this is a public meeting as that was.
And I understand.
Yep.
It's a lot to digest.
And there's a lot here.
There is. And these are goals, and these are wants and wishes and ways to go about things. These are not written into law or codified as such.
Correct. It's how we dedicate resources.
No, no, I agree with you there, but it's what the direction that the staff is going to be going in.
Yes.
Any other questions on this before Dylan moves on to the next section? All right, Dylan. And by the way, on that housing map, that is simply parcels or properties that have been identified that potentially could serve as housing sites, whether the property owner's interested in that, that's not taken into consideration here, but it's, you know, proximity to infrastructure, et cetera. So if you see a color that's over your particular property, that means nothing other than there is a potential there.
And I do not want to make it appear that I am in opposition to additional housing, far from it. I recognize the need that not only Calistoga has, but the entire state, in many cases, the whole nation has with finding housing for people. So like I say, it's just the discussion part of this, and what we leave with the staff as a direction to follow.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Goal number three, establish, improve, and maintain city infrastructure. I don't believe we had one change that I see here on item six during periods of drought, talking about anticipating that there will be more droughts after we just got through a five-year historic. I think we jumped a slide forward, so looking at priority projects before, you see a few minor changes, like removing Berry Street from one of our priority projects as we're wrapping that up. We did propose removing the Foothill Boulevard-Lincoln Avenue intersection that was discussed years ago. And then clarifying on item three at the very end, to offer to share replacement costs for our sidewalk trip hazard program within residential areas. That's where we've been doing it before, but we just clarified. Done this one. Final priority projects on goal three, to initiate, and we call it the dumpster relocation project, because we didn't have a better name for it, but this was, once Caltrans moves out of the parking lot behind the fire station, when that opens up, we want to be ready for that space to be ready for the public, if you will. So we talked about two projects back there. One, finalizing initiating plans to do the dumpster relocation project, also completing work on the AT&amp;T pathway project, which we're currently finalizing our permits for.
If you can go back to priority project number three, on the sidewalk trip hazard, just to clarify, under California Highway Code, the adjacent parcel is the responsible party for the condition of the sidewalk. What that means unfortunately in the state of California is, if there's a sidewalk passing in front of your residence or your business, you are responsible for the care and condition. What this city has chosen to do, and we've supported for the last several years, is to share in that cost with the resident. This is not a program for the commercial sector, unfortunately, but the city has pre-negotiated rates with contractors at a very favorable price point that the city splits with the residents. So this is something to take into consideration. It's also sometimes- residents. So this is something to take into consideration. It's also sometimes called the Chicago model, but we don't bury any bodies under our sidewalks. But it is an opportunity for residents to take advantage of that. But please know that it is your financially, technically your financial, but certainly your legal responsibility for the care and condition of that city sidewalk that does cross your property or is adjacent to your property. So if you have a property or a sidewalk that you're concerned about, touch base with Public Works or with the city, and we can share with you the cost-sharing program. Thank you.
We have, in a prior agenda item, when we prioritized what we were going to do with our street and sidewalk funding, one of our priorities was $100,000 towards sidewalk repair in area, Sector A. I don't know where that is, but it's the first sector, so it has an A. So...
Goal number four, we just modified the name of the goal to expand and prove recreational and community facilities. One of the items we had talked about just three weeks before October 8th, when the Tubbs fire started, was we had brought a plan for the Sharpstein Plaza and the community center. So we had discussion about, we got to pick that back up again and move forward with continuing efforts to create that master plan in developing a Sharpstein Plaza community center concept. Other priority projects, struck off a couple, at least one item that was on the list of implement a facility use agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Calistoga. We've done that. We're going to continue to work with them in how we share their building, share our building, which is the Monhof Center. We moved to work with citizen efforts to install bocce courts at Logue Vee Park, not because we don't want to do that project, but because there were other places in here where we talk about updating the Logue Vee Park master plan, there are other items, you know, support local efforts to improve Logue Vee Park. We felt that was mentioned there specifically, and whether it's bocce courts, whether it's Veterans Memorial, whatever project it is, you know, we want to enhance Logue Vee Park and continue to have that be a pristine park. Similar, we struck, worked with the Boys and Girls Club of Calistoga to restore the teen center activities at the Monhof Center. We've done that. It's been a very successful partnership. And we modified the preparing and needs assessment to show, prepare a capital project list for recreational community facilities. To really begin planning, you know, the mayor talked earlier about this building being beyond its useful life. We need to make sure that we're now planning for facility needs and developing that plan, and we'll do that before an actual recreational needs assessment, if you will. Goal number five, continue to obviously offer excellent customer services to all customers, but we'll continue to provide a high standard in the delivery of emergency and general municipal services. Number three, continue to promote and enhance communication and transparency. Specifically, council talked about implementing communication practices and tools to better reflect the cultural makeup of the community. And really, the discussion was, the question was, are the documents we're providing and preparing Spanish language also? But we talked about there's different grants available, there are ways we can better communicate agenda items, recreational guides, various things that all of our residents get, and make sure that we're bilingual, and more documentation should be a priority. On priority projects, one of the changes we made to project number three, as we added at the end, and execution of approved capital projects. And one of the ongoing discussions from the city council, and your clear direction to me is, as we plan for capital projects, need to be getting them done. Fortunately, we've seen some success recently, Lake Street, Berry Street, but we've got a whole list of other capital projects, water, wastewater, more streets, more sidewalks. We're going to be turning dust in the town for some time. And so that's going to be a key goal for the city, is making sure that we're completing projects and replacing our infrastructure. Goal number six, create an environmentally sustainable community. One of the specific priority projects that we changed was, we're going to bring our climate action plan back to city council, just for a review. We did this a couple of years ago, right after I started. We want to do that again, make sure we're documenting our progress and efforts. We've done several upgrades at facilities. We're now starting a fleet replacement schedule. There are other things. We added bike lanes on Lake Street. So there are things that we're doing and accomplishing. We want to make sure we're highlighting those. So we'll update the climate action plan and bring that back to city council.
And it's worth noting that the city of Calistoga was the first city in the county of Napa to actually adopt and implement a climate action plan. Some cities are still working on theirs.
Goal number seven, enhance Calistoga's small-town character by making it, we were clear to switch those words around, by making it safe and attractive. Safety and public health should come before attractiveness. On priority projects, we made a change to project number three, adopt updated code enforcement regulations and update nuisance abatement procedures. And we added, and provide needed resources for effective and efficient code enforcement. One of the things that I'll be providing as part of my budget recommendation to council in the coming months is be giving and asking for a discussion about code enforcement changes, things we can do to be more proactive in addressing outstanding nuisance violations, property-related code issues, and so on.
And these are quality-of-life nuisance impact issues?
Correct. We're not talking about a little bit of trash or an eight-inch-tall weed in your front yard. We're talking about things that, you know, there are properties in town that we deal with where they, there are trash set out back, and we get complaints about, you know, vermin in the area. We need to be addressing things quickly, efficiently. We need to care about the property owner at the same time. There, it is a quality-of-life issue for some, if not all, the people living around it. And that's a bad example, but that is a very hypothetical example that come to code enforcement officers' task. UD deals with that kind of stuff on a daily basis. And I think that constitutes the draft that I have before you. To council member Krause's, you know, comments earlier, I appreciate you pointing that out about, you know, first time seeing it. I think really the housing piece, it is the first time that many of you are seeing it. Please don't feel like if there are things you're not comfortable with yet, if you want more time, if you want us to go back and modify things, more than happy to. I think one of the things I like most about this process is we're really trying to identify, and there's, you know, there's public input you're willing to accept, there's public input which goes to the city council. You help develop the goals, objectives, for city staff. And now we take this document, and now we go to work, and we try to align so that we're, I want to say synchron...
Synchronistic.
Synchronicity, where we're lined up.
I'm usually not the guy to go to for diction.
Well, I'm looking at you to get some help there, Gary. You're not helping me. But you understand what we're trying to do, is we're trying to align priorities, and we're trying to make sure that our workload reflects, you know, the goals and objectives that council's providing us. So be happy to take any comments. Please feel free to share, and thank you.
And the goals and objectives are always created as part of the public process and in public meetings, as they were initially on March 19th, where I think we had two members of the public in the room. So now you all have the benefit of watching this part of the process as well. So with that said, council members, questions, comments, adjustments, suggestions on the goals and objectives, which again, they're important because they help guide the utilization and placement of resources as we prepare to set the budget for the following fiscal year.
Well, I have a couple of comments, just to piggyback on Gary's comments, which I'm, I think he's pointed out something, and I'm definitely sensitive to it. When you read a couple of these items, it gives the indication that we are wanting to sort of blanket the town with housing. And that certainly, as a member of the housing committee, is not my intent. And I'm just wondering, for example, item number three says, reclassify appropriate potential development sites to residential land use classifications or higher-density land use classifications. I mean, it seems to me that we don't necessarily need to be proactive, that it needs to be case by case. So for example, the agenda item that's before us tonight regarding the housing issue, that's, you know, related to a particular site. And so we can have that debate, the community can get involved. There are certain properties in town that perhaps would warrant higher-density land use reclassifications and others that don't. And so to basically just designate, you know, which properties we can reclassify, to me, doesn't make sense. I mean, I would rather slow things down, take it on a case-by-case basis, and we could probably just scratch that whole item. The same with item number two, consider deleting allowed commercial activities from appropriate residential zoning districts. I, you know, I also have issues with that. Again, it's a case-by-case basis. I don't think the council's saying, look, we don't want any more commercial development at all. That's not true. What we want to do is kind of put the brakes on being super proactive, on encouraging large development, so that we can shift our priority to address some of our other needs, which today is housing. But I don't think we want to, if somebody owns a piece of property that has the allowable zoning to do both, I don't think we should put a kibosh on that, right? You know, again, we need to just take it case by case and kind of slow down. So I think we could actually scratch that item. So if you scratch those two items, maybe everything else becomes a little bit more palatable for the council.
Council members want to weigh in on those two suggestions?
I like them. And I'm feeling more comfortable as we're discussing this. One of the things is, is we have quite a few people here, and perhaps after listening to our discussion on this, perhaps one or more of them may have a comment to make on these proposed goals and priority projects. So if there is somebody, I definitely want to hear from them. I'm sure the other council members do, too.
All right, any other...
Yeah, I think we should leave them in, but put in the wording within the two that you would like to scratch, that we will reclassify them on a case-by-case basis as needed or as requested. You know, if a property owner wants to have his property rezoned, reclassified, he can come to us and say, this is what I have in mind. Can you please do it? I think we need to have it in there.
Yeah, but I don't see it likely going from residential to resort.
No, I don't either, but give, always give the out for both ends. If you put it on a case-by-case basis and make it optional instead of a let's reclassify. Because I agree with you.
Don't actively pursue reclassification due...
Yeah, we don't want to do...
As needed basis. All right.
Yeah, I mean, just as, just as an example, I saw some of the properties that were outlined, and I'm just assuming I was interpreting the map correctly. As you come in 29, you have the Bounsell property and some other adjacent properties that I think were designated. And I know in the past, there's been proposals for like small winery or something like that. I by no means am thinking that as a gateway to our town, coming from St. Helena to Calistoga, that we want to see all housing right there at the entry to town. I mean, that just doesn't seem to me to be the appropriate location to put significant housing. It's, you know...
Except that that particular property is currently zoned and approved.
Not to mention it could be a floodway.
Is currently zoned and approved for 32 lots of housing.
Right, that's true. But the owner of the property, that has not been his preferred choice of use for that property. He's come with other proposals, which obviously haven't materialized. I don't know if I want to take, I wouldn't want to take that away, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't either. I want to make it as flexible as possible for the property owners to do what they want to do with their own property. That's their right.
Yeah. Okay. Any other council members on the housing side? Any other recommendations for the other priorities? We were pretty comfortable with those.
The other priorities I'm pretty comfortable with, and they were discussed at that meeting, but as I said, the ones we were just speaking about here, about the housing, like I say, it's support housing. We need it. But we need to make sure that we're setting these priority goals correctly and not...
And if we haven't set them quite correctly, we can always come back and tweak them.
Correct, they're not...
Do it in front of the public, just like this.
It's not a legislative act, exactly. All right, anyone in the public want to address any of the goals that we have outlined? This is not specific to a particular project or parcel. This is concept in general. Yes, please. If you can come up to the podium, unfortunately, you're required to do so. And please share with us, should you so choose, your name and your address, but you're not required to do so.
I'm Malene Hanson Picardi, and I live at 2944 Foothill, which is the White Lane, which is another issue. But I was very happy that council member Dunsford brought up reclassify, the word reclassify. And basically, that's my question. Does reclassify mean rezone? I mean, is that, what does the word reclassify mean to you that puts that in terms of your goals?
Reclassifying is zoning.
It is zoning.
It is changing zoning.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that. And also, can you explain, we couldn't figure out where anything is on this map. Where is...
Give a reference, Kathy.
Yeah.
So, St. Helena, New York.
Oh.
Do you want to add a link to that?
Give her a Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, okay. Right.
And Highway 29, show Highway 29 coming into town.
That's Silverado.
That's Silverado. Foothill is at the bottom.
That should be Foothill, right about there.
Yeah.
Think not for GPS, right?
Right in the center there.
So actually, most of those vacant or underutilized areas are along the periphery of the town, which makes them sort of, you were talking about the gateway to town.
Yeah.
And that's, that is a problem, that seems to be where all of these empty pieces are. Okay, that was just...
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Don Williams. I think the problem with the case-by-case approach is that the general plan is organized as a coherent whole, where all the parts are integrated and it's looked at as a unit. And to take it on a case-by-case would be to disregard how any single parcel or component of the general plan fits into the rest of it. And going case-by-case means that projects could be subject to undue influence, say, of any kind, with disregarding the cohesiveness of the general plan. So I think that the general plan should be respected, and the case-by-case approach, I think, is a dangerous precedent.
Except that when we do, as you know, when we do look at any kind of reclassification or rezoning, we are required to consider the general plan. So that is still the overarching view, and zoning is set to accommodate what the general plan was outlined for. But as we all know as well, the general plan, as well as zoning, are subject to modification, should the community so choose. But thank you for that. Anyone else? Yes?
Can I comment on Don's?
Please.
Don, just one comment on your point is, the point I was making is that I don't think the community would want us to change something that's of a lower density throughout the entire community and make it all higher density. So my point is, if a property owner wants to come forward with a higher-density project that the current zoning doesn't allow, he has every, he or she has every right to do that, and the council has, you know, every right to listen and entertain the possibility of rezoning a specific project. So if you look at the Bounsell property, for example, as Chris pointed out, currently it's zoned for 32 homes. And they have come forward in the past with a small, like, winery development. So, you know, I'm not saying, you got to ask yourself, driving into town, do you want to see 32 homes right there? Or something that has, you know, a lesser impact. So that's my point about case-by-case.
Yes, next.
I'm Kate Burquist. I live at 1602 Greenwood Avenue. I'm just wondering if the council has a goal for how much additional housing for how... Because, you know, that's, and how much can the town bear as the town grows?
And actually, our next agenda item talks about growth management numbers and how we get to those. So yes, we do.
Okay, I don't have an agenda in front of me.
That's quite all right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on any of the goals and objectives? All right, I'll close the public comment. So what modifications would we like to propose or take into consideration, specific to the housing element? Something that you'd be comfortable with, Gary and/or Michael?
I'm fine with Jim's proposal of just, you know, keeping the language, you know, a little bit loose, which maybe it already is. Item two says, "Consider," the word "consider," so, you know, it's nothing, it's not a directive. Item three specifically says, "Reclassify appropriate potential." You know, maybe we say, "Consider."
Consider the reclassification of...
Of potential development sites.
Of appropriate potential.
Is the rest of the council comfortable with that?
I agree on item three there with putting the word "consider" on item three instead of "reclassify." I'm still thinking a little bit about item two up there. And, you know, I can think of, there might be some appropriate use of a commercial property, perhaps on the first floor, like we are looking at over there on Grant Street.
Makes use of...
And then residential above. I think that's probably a good thing. So if we're talking about things like that, I could agree. And...
I think if you, if, would you, if you leave in "consider" on the second one, and then add on the third one, "Consider reclassification," that allows enough flexibility. There's no demand or requirement.
Yeah, I think...
Is the rest of the council comfortable with that?
I think it indicates we have some flexibility, but I don't see it as a direction to the city staff to go on out and start...
Reclassifying, correct.
Reclassifying.
It has to come to us from the public.
It has to come to us from...
We're not going to initiate it.
Correct, but we can, as, we can, as we do, have areas of consideration.
We have the same rights to...
Correct.
And there's one thing that I will say with the crowd that we got here tonight. You can have public meetings all you want, but in Calistoga, until you stick somebody with a sharp stick, they're not coming down here. So I'm very reassured by seeing the number of people in here that are not just here to be charmed by our sense of humor, but, because I know there's some real concerns out there, and I've been receiving them via email for the last two days.
We will save that for that agenda item. So on this one, to put this to bed.
I've got one more suggestion, and item number eight.
Item number eight, same section, correct?
Yes, acquire suitable properties. Insert the words "continue to acquire."
I don't know that "continue" needs to be in there.
All right, we'll leave it off.
We've done it, we're going to keep going at it, but it's just a minor point.
We're going to acquire.
Okay, one more thing for me. So Gary, you just brought up the mixed-use development, which is something that has been a priority, and I'm surprised it's actually not still listed in here, because we've always had that as, as something that we've always wanted to staff to encourage with any sort of potential commercial development.
Director Goldberg, could you weigh in on that?
It was added to objective one, at the end of objective one, mixed-use housing. We didn't have a specific priority project associated with it.
Is it, I mean, is it necessary? I know you, you...
No, we already allow it.
I know you do it anyways.
Yeah, we allow it already.
Yeah, it's on the first objective.
It's just highlighting, you know, at the end of the first objective, we added the mixed-use, just to highlight it.
So Kathy, have you captured those proposed changes?
Did you still want to change item eight?
No.
No.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Are we okay? Acquire, continue?
I like the word "continue," but if nobody else does, I'm certainly not going to fight it.
I think we just leave it alone.
All right.
Okay.
You're good with that?
Sure.
All right, so you're good with two, three, and eight, correct?
Yep. Dylan, can you explain item seven? The one...
As revised, I'm sorry.
I...
Or can you let...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. This is going to be covered kind of by the next item, but right now, growth management system bases our population growth, assumes a household size of, as defined by the state, of the most current household size, which is 2.56. And what I'm suggesting is that for certain projects, such as the senior apartment project, to assume something closer to 1.25, because we're not going to have two and a half people in the studios and the very small one-bedroom units there, so it would just free up some allocations.
Okay.
So it's simply reflecting the actual population of the senior project. And once we get information from the project, once it leases up, we'll have a better understanding of that, and so we, it might go up. But it was just trying to reflect that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Kathy, so number one, number two stays as-is? Number two, under housing, sorry, under priority projects?
That's what I showed.
Okay, number three, you insert, change the words to "consider reclassification."
Correct.
And that's it on that?
Right, no number eight.
No number eight. Sorry, Jim. And then the rest of the packet, everyone's okay with the rest of the goals and objectives?
Yes.
All right, so I will consider to entertain a motion on this as presented with the modifications.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. It's government in action, folks. It's like making sausage. Nobody wants to watch it. Consideration of accepting a report on growth management system and water, wastewater availability. The recommended action this evening is to accept the report and direct staff as necessary. Taking us through this item will be Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg. Lynn, welcome back.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. This is a report that's given to you on an intermittent basis to just keep you apprised of where we stand with the growth management system that was adopted in 2005. Generally, growth management is accomplished by allocating a certain amount of water every year and also targeting an annual population growth of 1.35%, which was established back in 2003. The system is organized into five-year cycles. The current cycle is 2015 to 2019, so that means we're in the fourth year of this cycle. And the first table shows you the growth that has occurred since 2015, which is the benchmark for this cycle. We've added, well, as of last May, we had added 60 people over the first two years of the cycle. And it shows that we're below the 1.35% maximum. Just to update you on some, where we stand with the allocations and also permits that have been issued for projects that are exempt from the allocation requirements, which I won't go into unless you'd like me to. We've issued 65 permits for 65 units, and as I explained, don't expect that to exceed the annual growth rate, because most of those permits were for the senior apartments project, as well as the Silver Rose project. We don't expect several of those homes to be occupied on a full-time basis, that would be their primary residence and counted towards the population that's reported by the state every year. And by the way, we expect the numbers for 2018 to come out in the next couple of weeks. In terms of non-residential growth, we've allocated about 24 acre-feet of water, including a good chunk to the Boys and Girls Club and the Silver Rose projects. And we still have almost 18 acre-feet to allocate through the remainder of the cycle, which is the end of next year. There are also, as you remember, provisions in there that we can borrow from future years. We can also bring forward unused allocations from past years, if the council so chooses, which they did last year. Not that we've used them, but we have an estimated total of 372 residential allocations that are available. And in terms of available water and wastewater, there's several detailed tables showing our available water supply, which ranges from 220 to 451 acre-feet. That's based on various assumptions, including drought conditions, or some reduced water supply. Also, the wastewater capacity is at about 123 acre-feet, and just wanted to note that that factors in unused obligation to Calistoga mineral water of almost 70 acre-feet. So when you, you can see that in the last table, table, excuse me, attachment four, shows that we're obligated, we have certain things on standby, but there's a lot of water and wastewater capacity that's out there that's not being used, but we're obligated to reserve it. In terms of anticipated development during the remainder of the cycle, the table, bottom of page three, shows some of the approved projects, which total between 2.5 and 5% of water capacity, almost 6% of the wastewater capacity. Also tried to give you a preview of what might be coming as we process various entitlement applications. The biggest one you'll see is the Veranda project, which is in preliminary review. It's at the development agreement stage. And a few other projects that we have under consideration, and the amount of water, of water supply and wastewater generation capacity, wastewater capacity that they would use. Something that was asked for at the council goal-setting session last month was just an overview of where we might stand over the next couple decades in terms of development. Back in 2014, you'll remember the Development Impact Fee Study, and staff made certain development assumptions on certain properties to just get a snapshot of what might occur over the following 20 years, so we're four years into that. So the table on the bottom of four shows, we call it potential development through 2034, and it includes a variety of single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, guestrooms, commercial square footage, restaurant square footage. And we use these to base the impact fees that we now charge. So we had to make certain assumptions in how to spread out those costs over the next 20 years. So these were the figures we used. Some of it, they were slightly higher, because some of the projects have been constructed since 2014. I also wanted to point out that these figures include a good portion of the Veranda water usage and wastewater treatment capacity. So I didn't, just wanted to point out, you know, we shouldn't double count those. So those are reflected in table three. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Tried to explain the methodology and the various attachments, so thought we didn't have to do a deep dive, since this is a periodic report to you.
Thank you. So this is agenda item number eight. There are packets, should still be packets on the back, and they're obviously also available on the website, and it takes you through, as Lynn indicated, the methodology of each piece. One thing I wanted to point out very clearly is on page four, table two, where it has pending projects. So for example, the Veranda, Solage expansion, gas station, single-family dwellings, Rivers Marie Winery, et cetera, those are proposed projects. They are not approved projects. They have not been through the public process. They have not been through the public hearing process. In almost all cases, they're still at the staff input stage. So don't walk away thinking, oh, those are already approved. So just to be clear on that. Council members, questions on the growth management report? And Kate, to your point, what drives our potential growth rates, or to your question, is first and foremost is the availability of water, then sewer, and then so on, so forth, and that's what drives us. And what this council did do last year is we had, over the period, I'm going to put you on the spot, Lynn, over a period of 10 years, we did not realize 98% of our growth allowance. So we didn't have growth that we had anticipated previously, so the council allowed for that to be pulled forward, because we still had the capacities and water, sewer, et cetera, and infrastructure.
And actually, it began the capacities. One of the reasons we didn't see the growth at the beginning was we didn't have the water available, and we didn't have the wastewater treatment capacity. And we have increased both of those since growth management was instituted, and the resource management system.
Right, and in addition to, there was a serious economic strain period where people weren't building and adding bodies to the city. Council members, questions?
So I see in table three, which is the potential development through 2034, I look at the single-family and multiple-family units, it adds up to 189 units. So that is what, at some point, we thought the potential development through 2034, so that's going forward, how many years? 16 years, something like that.
And that was proposed four years ago.
Well, it was...
Anticipated four years ago, 2014.
It wasn't really anticipated, we just kind of went property by property, and based on our conversations with people interested, property owners, developers, things that we thought we might be likely to see.
It was an educated guess in 2014.
Exactly. And it continues to be, you know, I could do a different one every year, but we had to, we had to stick a pin in it.
Guess who buys the first round of drinks for everyone in the room?
At the end.
Yeah. Other questions, councilmembers? All right, in the public, any questions? Anyone want to address the council? This is, as Lynn indicated, this is what we do on a rolling basis to ensure that we have the necessary resources to accommodate current needs, future needs, and as Lynn also indicated, we use very, very conservative numbers, especially when it comes, when it's relative to water and wastewater management. So that's kind of the starting point for those conversations. All right, I'll, yes, sir. Should you so choose, share with the council, share with the public your name and address, but you're not required.
Thanks for the moment to speak. My name is Peter Heights. I live at 2882 Foothill Boulevard. My comment would be that I, 20 years ago, when I came to town, I remember that there was no water allocations, there was drought. Maybe Calistoga wasn't hooked up to the North Bay Aqueduct. It seems to me that, I do understand that we get water from that situation, and that we base our growth and future on that. It seems to me like that's at more risk than our own, building our own water capacity here, and that basing future growth on water that we have no ability to protect or consider forever-ness to is advised. I just personally believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council, and all we're looking for on this item is to accept the report and/or give staff direction. All right, consider the report accepted, and thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, consideration of a resolution making a request by the True Life Companies LLC, also known as TTLC, to enter into a development agreement for the development of a residential project at 2650 Foothill Boulevard. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this item this evening will be Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg. Lynn, all yours.
Thank you. The three properties that are subject of this item are located on the northwest side of the city, adjoining the Heather Oaks subdivision and the Napa River. They are currently improved with a single-family residence and a small vineyard. The parcels are currently designated by the Calistoga General Plan as rural residential, which would allow the development of approximately up to 46 single-family homes or possibly multiple wineries. The True Life Companies specializes in market-rate housing, including attached and detached product types, and has a number of projects in the Bay Area. It is interested in developing the properties with approximately 250 residences, including below-market-rate rental units that would be deed-restricted at or near 120% of area median income, or the moderate income that we were discussing before. Planning commission and city council approval of a number of entitlements would be required for such a project, including a general plan amendment to reclassify the properties to an appropriate designation, a rezoning to an appropriate zoning district, a subdivision map and design review. The project would also be subject to environmental review to identify potential impacts in such areas as traffic, water supply, and wastewater treatment capacity, and identify appropriate mitigation measures to avoid or reduce any impacts. The True Life...
The True Life Companies is interested in entering into a development agreement with the city to define developer and city responsibilities. The city would also have the ability to negotiate the number and types of housing units, as well as potential community benefits, such as infrastructure improvements and recreational facilities. As a first step towards any development agreement, the council needs to authorize a memorandum of understanding that commits the city to beginning negotiations and establish a two-member ad hoc council subcommittee that would provide oversight to the city manager in negotiating the draft terms and conditions. As you know, as we've been discussing, the community has a substantial housing need for current and future local workers, as well as to allow new household formation. The vacancy rate in all types of housing is extremely low, and hundreds of local jobs are anticipated to be added in the near future. Potential developers of residential projects cite the limited availability of feasible sites in the city as a primary development constraint. The proposed project site's size is unique within the city limits, and it represents an opportunity to provide a number and variety of housing units. The council, as we just discussed, has identified the expansion of housing opportunities as a priority goal, consistent with the goals of the general plan's housing element. Additionally, the council's ad hoc housing subcommittee has identified these properties, among others, as a possible location for new housing that meets local needs. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council review the preliminary proposal and make a determination on whether it merits entering into a draft memorandum of understanding, which could lead to a development agreement. And the draft MOU is provided for council consideration and authorization as a first step towards a possible development agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And if you could clarify, that an MOU is at the very, very beginning stages of any kind of project, whether it be a commercial development or a residential development, it does not in any way, shape, or form constitute an approval of anything being discussed or considered in this preliminary stage.
That is true. We are in an MOU stage and development agreement stage with several projects, and they've been undergoing the process for quite some time.
To further reinforce that for the public, page eight of the MOU agreement, subparagraph A said it's not intended to set forth any material terms, but B states, "No legal obligation shall arise for the city." And item C says, "City retains absolute discretion to consider any particular development proposal." So this document just allows us to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. And what we're doing with this, as a property owner and a potential partner or owner, as a developer, they are entitled to make these requests and considerations, the request of the city. And what we do is we take into balance and consideration what the needs of the community are, and we go from there. So very simply put, it's a discussion, not a decision. So I just want to be very clear on that. And I thank everyone. I know all of the council members have received several emails, phone calls, texts. We always appreciate when people, and the press will know this because I complain about it all the time, we absolutely appreciate when people engage at the front of the process versus at the 11th hour. This is very much the front of the process. And while we do appreciate some of the benefits of said things like Facebook and Nextdoor.com, just because it's written there does not make it true or factual. So you are always welcome and encouraged to, if there's something, whether it be this subject or any other, that makes you uncomfortable, reach out to us. Find us at CalMart. You've got our cell phones, our email addresses, et cetera. And Lynn, and Dylan as well, don't let it spiral into some of the things I've seen on other topics, including this one. And I can assure you, despite what a particular gentleman is encouraging on one of those said platforms, I am not receiving any significant or any kickback from any developer at this point. The only interest we have in even considering this as a council is the priorities of the community, which is housing. So with that said, council members, any questions of staff at this point? All right, yes.
I have no questions of staff. I would like to hear from the public.
We're going to get to that next. That's my job.
There's also a representative from the True Life Companies.
All right, so we also have Representative True Life, who is here to answer any questions as well. With that said, I do have some speaker cards, which I will start from.
Would it be appropriate to hear from True Life first about...
Would you like to? Come on up. Please share with us your name and the organization you represent, and welcome.
Good evening, council members and community. My name's Leah Bennison. I am the Vice President of Entitlements for the True Life Companies. I come from San Ramon, coming up here, and look forward to the opportunity to having this discussion with yourselves and the community about what is the appropriate level of density for what we now affectionately call the Yellow Rose Ranch. I think it's well-known in the community. I'm here to put a face to the company name, and any dealings that you will be having will be with me directly. We also have an affordable housing partner who's interested in being a part of this conversation. So as earlier discussed with what percent AMI, you know, we need to have those conversations, and the MOU will allow us to get down to the nitty-gritty details on what is appropriate in this location. As you stated super early, I had to put together a kind of a overview of what we, our vision would be for the property. And at rural residential and 46 units, that doesn't, that gives you 46 estate lots, and I don't think that necessarily provides the variety of housing types that the City of Calistoga might be looking for. So my proposal in the letter, as you've seen in your packet, is our shot across the bow first, and lets open up the conversation, and looking forward to doing so. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. All right. So I have three speaker cards, which I'll start with, and then we'll go from there. Just as a reminder, you are limited to a maximum of three minutes. If someone prior to your speaking has made your point for you, do not feel compelled to come forward. And again, this is a discussion, this is not a decision, and we will go from there. So the first one I have is Mr. Doug Molitor. And now that I've shared your name, Doug, should you so choose, share your name and your address with the, at the podium, and maintain three minutes.
Sure. My name is Doug Molitor. I live at 2771 Foothill. Do not go forward with this MOU. I agree, through my own befuddlement with Mr. Kraus, that this has the linkage of what the mayor called the Chicago model. It's this trying to ram this through very quickly.
Right phrase, different topic, but go ahead.
But it came up, and you brought it up.
There we go.
This is a Chicago model. This is getting it through. Don't go forward with this, because these people only add cost to the project, because they are not the ones that are going to do any of the work. They're just going to do the paper shuffling. Two, don't change the zoning. The minute you change the zoning, the property just goes all downhill. Now, we all are aware that this is the nail coming into the coffin from the two resorts we permitted back when we had $1.47 in the bank, right? We needed the money, so we permitted the resorts. Now we're paying the price. But this whole priority projects thing that was just shown is totally aimed at spoiling the character of the town by bowing to the results of those two projects coming into town. We know that, we knew it was coming. We knew their employees were the issue. We knew traffic was the issue. And now we're trying to change the whole tenor of this town and of the property. Second, there's a, this same conversation is going to go on when somebody tries to sell the fairgrounds. So whatever you do now is going to be replicated when the fairgrounds come up for sale. And it's going to be sold to probably, because we have so much water, it's going to be sold to a water park resort. We're going to get all these people coming in on the weekends, water park. I've never heard about this much water in Calistoga. I'm, you know, we've had water rationing, we've had water cutbacks, but here suddenly, oh no, we got all this entitlement. And look at, you've got these water pitchers here that have filters in them, because the water is so bad, you can't drink it out of the tap, right here. So you live, you live with this too. This, this water thing is totally absurd. So some of the things the developer should be aware of, the lady who just spoke...
You have 30 seconds.
150 new kids with this, 150 new kids to the school. So the schools have, have to build a new building, they have to find land for that. I don't know where that is in the plan. Okay? So I got the solution, though. I don't want to be just the troublemaker.
You have 15 seconds to deliver your solution.
Or laying the Clear Lake. Lake County wants people, Lake County's got the land, Lake County's got the water. We don't necessarily need the people, we ain't got the water, and we don't want the lake rezoned. So do not rezone, and do not approve this.
Thank you very much. I, we're gonna, we're gonna nip this one early. It just adds time. Thank you, though. Big smiles show encouragement. Next, we have Aileen. Welcome back.
So again, I'm Aileen Hanson Picardi at 2944 Foothill. And I've lived in Calistoga. My family has lived here for 25 years, 20 years on White Lane. And I have two grown children, went through Calistoga schools, went off to universities, and both work in Calistoga or within the Calistoga area limits, and live at 2944 as well. So this whole idea of reclassifying and rezoning is very problematic to me. I felt that private property rights are very important in this country, and part of that is what you, when you buy a piece of property, what those, those, that property is owned. And so that was a reason for myself and my late husband to buy that piece of property, was the fact that it was rural residential, and we felt that we had a buffer around us. We chose to pay a little bit more money, go into a little more debt, so that we had some sort of a buffer, so that our kids could still go to school in Calistoga, because we liked the small-town atmosphere, the small-town charm, the fact that my kids couldn't do anything without me knowing about it, probably within 20 or 30 minutes at most. And I'm afraid that if we rezone, as has been talked about, again, this is, I realize this is just a memorandum of understanding, and so does True Life actually own the property now? That's my first question. Is it, or are they looking to buy?
Please, you can, you can come up, please. If you have further questions, you can ask those, and she can answer at the end.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'll just step aside.
Do you have other questions? If you can ask those now, unless they're all of True Life?
Okay.
Thank you, just so we're keeping your three minutes going here.
Okay. So True Life, I don't, if they own the property, then I can see they go to the planning commission, and you ask, okay, please consider this. If they're looking to buy the property, and this is contingent, whether they have a memorandum of understanding, then it's a whole different ballgame. Because then we're saying, oh, well, yeah, you probably can go ahead and rezone, or it is a possibility that we'll rezone. Now, you said that there's no legal implications for a memorandum of understanding, but if they actually don't own the property yet, and you're giving them a memorandum of understanding, doesn't that encourage them to buy the property, which they may not be able to use in the way they want it to?
There's still no legal responsibility on our part, and that's their, that's their risk.
Okay. And I think that's, I basically said everything that I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you clarify for us the ownership of the parcel, or potential ownership of the parcel, whatever you are comfortable with sharing, without jeopardizing your position?
It's fine. We have an option on the property, but we have to have property owners' approval and signature on everything we do. So we not, I would not be here before you if the property owners were not in complete compliance and understanding of what rezoning meant.
All right, thank you. Next card I have is Mr. Donald Williams.
Thank you. On View Road, Calistoga has a general plan to guide development. A lot of Calistogans worked a long time to carefully craft it as a unified document with a coherent vision. It's like our town's constitution. We know it can be changed, but we can't change one part of it to accommodate a single project, and then afterwards maintain that now that project is consistent with the general plan. That would be highly disingenuous. So this would be a huge project for Calistoga, and I know that agreeing to this memo doesn't constitute permission to break ground. But the memo declares the city is, quote, "supportive of the development concept." And once that train gets rolling with a signed memo, it's hard for this council to change direction. Public comments become a formality. Just because someone says it's needed doesn't mean it is. It just means that somebody wants it. It doesn't mean it's good for Calistoga. It may be, or it may not be. I don't know that, but neither does any of us here, until it's discussed among us who live here. So we don't need to hear that the memo is preliminary or not final. Before, before the memo is approved, Calistogans want a more holistic approach. What are the likely effects on traffic, and housing, and water, and small-town life and character? What is the effect on the larger Up Valley? What about a forum with St. Helena to discuss regional development? They have a stake in this, too. So this thing is too big to be fast-tracked. That ranch has been there for a long time. It's not going anywhere. Neither are developers. We need more information and discussion before going forward and before signing this memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Do we get all that out now? We're good? All right, I don't have any more speaker cards. Is anyone else wish, interested in addressing the council on this item? Please, share with us your name and address, should you so choose.
Charlotte Williams, View Road. About five years ago, make it six, the three elected members of this council and the two appointed members of this council were strong proponents for the two resort developments on either side of town. But none of you spoke up strongly about making sure there were allowances for affordable housing within those development agreements. Those are large developments, many rooms, many employees needed, but no one here spoke up strongly, saying, well, we better make sure there's housing for those needed employees. I think maybe the Silver Rose project paid something like $175,000 into affordable housing. I think that would build about half of a studio apartment, approximately. So it doesn't seem like this council has done a very good job negotiating big projects when we're left here five years later, six years later, needing affordable housing for employees that clearly were going to be needed five years ago. So, and at this point, I believe there are four cease and desist orders that the city is under for the wastewater treatment plant. That means it's not operating correctly. And until we have infrastructure improved, I don't believe we should be going ahead with any sort of developments of any size at all. And until those cease and desist orders are completed, the wastewater treatment plant upgraded appropriately, because right now, I don't, it might be, might be able to, you know, the capacity might be there, but there wouldn't be cease and desist orders if it was functioning correctly, not four cease and desist orders. So there are infrastructure problems that need to be taken care of before any more development happens here. And really, I think council members need to learn to negotiate better instead of dropping things like this on the residents, because that is who will pay. That's typically what developers do, too. They rarely pay into any project enough. That's typically what developers do to, they rarely pay into any project enough so that infrastructure needs are taken care of. It usually ends up being the taxpayers who take care of it later. So I'd like to see, if I just say no, I agree with Mr. Molitor that, "Don't approve this. Don't go ahead with this MOU. It's a big mistake."
Thank you. For clarification, both resort projects did contribute significantly to the housing fund, and to be specific, uh, the property at the end of Washington Street that the city purchased and is now about to complete thirty units of housing for seniors on fixed incomes, which will be opening in May, was a direct result of the funds contributed to that housing fund. The two parcels that were purchased at the end of Eddie, Eddie and Earl, were purchased by the city using the affordable housing funds contributed by the projects. What we've chosen, and we've made very clear to the community, the most effective use of our funds for affordable housing that all development contributes into, and was negotiated well beyond a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, is for the city to acquire the land and then partner with developers and organizations who build that type of housing. The intended use for the Eddie and Earl Street parcels is to do housing for workforce or affordable housing relative to workforce. So, just to clarify that point. And regarding the cease and desist orders, there's nothing to do with the systems not operating properly. Um, it was an acceleration of projects needing to be addressed, um, which, as you well know, uh, the community, because we've talked about this several times, were projects we were going to address on, over a longer period of time, but has now been condensed, um, and the city is living up to all of those, so it's not a matter of not being able to handle the capacity we currently have. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Mr. McNay. I thought we were going to get through the evening without hearing from you.
Dennis McNay, twenty-six fifty-three Foothill.
Welcome back, Dennis.
This guy Doug is my neighbor.
I know.
Okay. Anyway, I think we ought, you ought to appoint him to negotiate this deal. That'll put us on the proper footing.
It's always very easy to do.
Uh-huh. I, I, I just had a couple of things. Those yellow spots that you showed on your map, a lot of those areas, there's a reason there's no buildings on them. It's not because it was the prime land in Calistoga. Uh, so, you might wanna, well, they might want to take a closer look at it. Uh, the notice that I never received about the construction going on next door to me, um, the Highland Court lots, that you made an order in so neighbors would be notified. But anyway, I've been watching that little deal, you might want to take a look at it. They had to dig a hole where the houses are gonna be six feet deep and bring gravel in and fill it. And that's a lot of gravel, I'll tell you. So that, they can't compact that soil. So that has turned out to be kind of an issue. And it turns out, across the street, uh, that particular area, oh, actually, I'll tell you, originally that land was a two-hundred-acre plot. It was given to the Cyrus family by bail, so they could grow stuff out there. So they wanted to be next to the Napa River. And the Napa River, water runs into it from the sides also. So part of it is kind of, let's say, swampy, but the whole soil itself is, uh, very difficult to compact, apparently. So, if you notice, like, in the Riverly area, all those houses are single, kind of, uh, units, floor units, I mean, there's not multiple stories. So I think originally they had a problem with the ground supporting the houses, so that made kind of an issue. So next door there, there's been nothing on it for, what, well, ever, except the one house. So I think that's gonna be a real issue, but that's not your problem, that's more their problem. Unless they just, you know, want to buy it and realize they're in trouble and bail out. But I don't think those houses are gonna disturb the motorcycles that go up that road Sunday morning. So, you know, that's, uh, part of the issue, but, uh, I think, I think they're gonna, you know, it's not gonna be an ideal situation till they, you know, till, yeah, a good plan probably is available, but I don't see it yet. So that's the only thing I have to say about it. Thank you.
And Dylan, did we ever look into why Mr. McNay wasn't notified on that project next door to him?
Yes, my understanding is Mr. McNay, did you attend a Planning Commission meeting and provide any comments on the projects when they were being approved?
I did. I still haven't gotten my notice.
All right. Anyone else?
That's a no.
Hello. My name is Joe Richard, Myrtle Street. Um, I don't want to waste people's time, but I just wanted to add that it wasn't that long ago that a lot of people spent a lot of time working on the general plan. And what they wanted to do was to develop the kind of town that the community wanted. And that's why the general plan was developed, with residential areas, with commercial areas, with low density, with high density. What we're talking about now is really making a substantial change to a low-density area. And I just think, what was the point of all that work, of all those people, when we're just gonna throw it away? So, I know we need housing, but still, I think it should not be in an area that was designated as low-density. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the council? Good evening.
Samantha Snyder from Mitzi Drive. Um, lived there for twenty-five years, and when we're lucky enough to have rain every year, the, about the block directly behind our house, about four houses, turns into a beautiful lake. Uh, I have wonderful pictures of ducks and geese and everything else swimming. Uh, it overflows, um, as gentlemen said, into the river there, but I'm wondering if an environmental impact study has been done, considering that to be a wetland area. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Goldberg, that would be, if it has been done, if not, is required to be done, correct?
That would absolutely be part of any environmental review.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the council? Sir, we could have given you diplomatic priority. Formal council member retired, Placido Garcia, welcome back, Placido. It's much nicer to be over there, isn't it?
Yes. Placido Garcia, eleven twenty-seven, Mitzi Drive. You know, leaving Mitzi, I got a lot of reason to come, because, uh, you start thinking, before we got to projects already and work there, like, um, Silver Rose, Shantel, they're gonna start working pretty soon, in a few years, I don't know. But how about the water? We don't know how much the reason you're going, the result we're gonna have the water, the traffic do. It's going to be more traffic, more water use, and then, we already got a problem with the water. It would have got wood water. And then, what's gonna happen, when two-hundred-fifty houses, two-hundred-fifty cars, if we put one car by a house, it's gonna be more. In and out, in and out. We got problems already with the traffic congestion in, and, uh, who's here? In Petrophite Road. We got already a big problem to go over, to go to town especially, to come to the, to Lake County or the right side, and just stop, and run in front of Foothill. It's, left, right can be okay, left, it's a lot of problems right now. These two-hundred-fifty houses over there, you're going to grow, you're going to cause a big problem for our neighborhood over there. Two-hundred-fifty, like, almost five units, five, how, five units at Riverly, put it together, it's gonna change the image of this town too. Until the council, supposed to, don't approve right now, think before, and the consequence, and the town, the people in town, we call Calistoga is not for sale. Calistoga is not for sale. Calistoga, the home of the Calistoga, the people of this town. If the people of the town need asking to the council, the protection of this town. And already, it's growing, it's gonna, it's a, out of proportion, with those, those, uh, big developments over there, especially, we already, there was something said, you're going to put a stoplight over there. It's going to be worse. Now the, the traffic getting moving, it was, like I said, less than more than two-hundred cars over there, see, we count one unit, it's going to be a big, big, the, thing for this town. It's going to change the image of this town, it's going to change the people of this town too, why? Because we already, every time any development come to town, the cost will even go higher. It'll go higher. Now it's high, it's going to be more higher pretty soon. And after these units come, I'll just, uh, please, think of the town first, before you decide something, because it's very critical for our, for our town, for our people. And, uh, Calistoga is not for sale. Calistoga for the Calistoga people who live here. I'm not against housing, I want to make clear. I'm favorable housing, but, uh, uh, pro the housing, it really, really going to help the town, the people's town. No, the beauty parliament, as it is, it's going to be a lot of people going to, can buy those houses over there. It's gonna come, have people from outside, it may be, just for weekends, coming to, using the weekends, because a lot of people looking for those places. To have, they go to hotels, have a place to live over here for the weekends. And then, it's going to be, because the people town in Calistoga, not everybody can buy their house. And, and who's the benefit? Outside people. But I want to say back again, I'm not against housing.
Thank you.
Winning housing, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Placido.
Bye.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Thank you, I'm Peter Heights again, at twenty-eight eighty-two Foothill Boulevard. I, I just wanted to comment on the, I think it was, it was section eight of tonight's proceedings, where we were looking at one-point-three-five percent growth. Our town has five thousand people, we're growing something like seventy people a year. And at the two-point-five-six people per housing unit, uh, we'd need to add about fifteen houses per year. This is talking about two-hundred-and-sixty housing units. Uh, that would be something like all the housing we need for the next eighteen years, if nobody builds anything else on any other lot in the town, including the, um, low-income housing the city is so wisely affording us. So, the, um, it just seems like a big chunk of the apple, um, that will, that'll just take the wind out of our sails in terms of having smaller, more thoughtful and diverse building. Um, you know, if you go to the town of Windsor, and, what, fifteen years ago, they built a new downtown, it looks like Downtown Disney, and has no real authentic character of place, because everything looks exactly the same. You know, my sister lives out in Rancho Mariachi, out in, out in the Central Valley, and all the houses look like little, um, McMansions that are jammed on their lots. It's not, it, it looks, it maybe, let's try to find fifteen housing units that we build each year, and then we'll have nice, even growth over a long period of time that's sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter.
Anyone else? All right, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for consideration or clarification via staff. Who would like to go first? I'm looking at you, Gary.
You're looking at me, okay. I, I share the concerns that I have heard, uh, both tonight and have received emails on. Uh, I haven't talked to anybody at CalMart about it, because I'm scared to go in there right now. But, uh, like Placido said, we, we have housing needs in town, uh, and we also have a heck of a problem at that intersection over there. That is essentially a failed intersection, I believe is the technical term for it. To add, um, several, probably what would work out to be over a thousand trips a day through that intersection because of two-hundred-and-fifty houses, uh, over there, um, is a significant impact. And I'm not sure that putting a stoplight in would, uh, correct that. As the property stands right now, um, there's forty-three acres, I think I heard here.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Forty-seven point six.
Acres, um, zone, one home per acre.
Yep.
Forty-six houses is a lot of houses. Uh, you could argue that, um, that's gonna have significant impact on that, on that intersection, and it, it certainly would. We have people that are concerned about the, quote, "gentrification," end quote, of, uh, Calistoga. This certainly addresses the gentrification, uh, issue, uh, because there's not that many people are going to afford to build a house on a one-acre piece of property. But, um, on the other hand, people in the area made plans, you know, their future plans based upon the way the zoning is there, and, uh, I, I understand what they're talking about. If I was living over there, I would step down from the podium, I'd be out there probably with you, um, voicing my concerns. So, um, I, I think that there, I, I know, on page four of the staff report, there is a, uh, item there, uh, one-oh-six through one-oh-nine says alternatives. Um, I'd like to hear more about what might be built over there, because sooner or later, we're gonna get another, uh, proposal for that property. Calistoga's an attractive place to live, and folks are gonna look at that property and they're gonna say, "Gee whiz, I can do this with it." So, I think we need to look at some alternatives for that property, um, how it's gonna impact that intersection right there. I, I don't know about the, the company that is proposing to do this, where they're getting their money from, who they are, uh, exactly. Um, there's been a suggestion that it's a bunch of Russian oligarchs, but, you know, uh, you know.
That part was a joke.
Yes, it was a joke, although the person who asked me that probably wasn't joking.
We know that same person.
Uh, the, uh, so I'm, I'm very hesitant to approve moving forward on a, on an MOU at this time. Uh, I think sometime someone's gonna come up with a proposal that would be, uh, acceptable to the community. I'm not sure that, as this one is put forth to us right now, that it would be acceptable. And, um, so I'd like to hear what the alternatives off in the future are, and at this point, I'm not, uh, unless I hear something that changes my mind in the next few minutes, uh, I'm, I'm not supportive of forwarding an MOU.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Uh, since, um, this came out, I received about twelve emails from, uh, people concerning about this issue. And I'm really concerned too, this is, I agree with, uh, Council Gross that this is a big project for Calistoga. Nineteen years ago, when I moved to Calistoga from a high-density city, daily city, next to San Francisco, uh, I make a decision to move to Calistoga exactly for the reason that this city has a small-character city. It's a very safe city to raise your kids. Um, uh, all the neighbors, you know your neighbors, you go to CalMart, you know everybody in the school. The schools are very safe. Um, so I'm really concerned about this, I think will be too much for Calistoga. Also, during these years of living in the Napa Valley, I see how much grow, it's been happening in, in the south cities, Napa, American Canyon. And it's kind of scary that very soon we're gonna be like that, so I hesitate to continue with this.
Councilmember Barnes.
Uh, I agree with, uh, both Councilman Gross and Councilwoman Lopez, this is a far-too-big a project for Calistoga, as it has been presented. However, I would be interested in the alternatives, uh, we, as it states on page four, and I think Gary said, "Request the applicant submit additional information and consideration, preliminary plans, blah, blah, blah." If those preliminary plans and architectural sites and drawings are based on two-hundred-and-fifty units, I would say no. Don't waste your time. However, as somebody pointed out, we have forty-seven acres here, and you build McMansions, you got forty-seven million and a half to two-million-dollar homes. What good does that do us? Absolutely not. do us? Absolutely nothing. Doesn't fulfill any housing requirements, and who the hell is going to buy them, except, like somebody may have pointed out, very rich weekenders? So, that's not an option. Somewhere in the middle, there has to be some kind of an option. So, I wouldn't close the door on an MOU, but I would be very hesitant to issue one tonight without a lot more information. We do have to talk to developers. We have to solve our housing problem. We have to solve our workforce housing problem. I just don't think this is it, given the tremendous amount of problems it would engender. Traffic, schools, density, just town character, degradation of property owners' values of their homes that live adjacent to or across the street. Doug, I did talk to your wife, you didn't call me, but had a nice conversation with Shelby. So, for those reasons, I think we do need to talk, but not at this level. I would have no interest in this type of development at all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunford.
I echo Councilmember Barnes's comments. The 250 is obviously a huge number. I have a problem with that. I agree that building 46 or 40, one and a half to $2 million single-family homes is not a solution for that property. So, I'm not opposed to the higher-density issue and taking a look at that, but it has to be something that's a little bit more palatable, and also has to have a lot of imagination and creativity in the project. I absolutely will not support any sort of cookie cutter, track home, Disneyland-type of project. I don't want to be Windsor. I understand the comments. You know, I care deeply about this town and what it looks like, and all the things that people appreciate about the town. So, those things are very important to me, but I would entertain the idea of going forward, not with this specifically 250 residences, if there was something else that was, you know, a lower number that would at least allow the process to go forward, where we could have conversations with the developer. I don't know anything about this particular developer. I haven't seen any of their projects. I would be, like to know, like, what they can do, what they've done before. Can they do things that, you know, are interesting and of super-high quality and give a good look and feel for the neighborhood? Obviously, there's traffic problems. Those things would have to be addressed. So, I don't want to shut the door. I mean, I think even if this doesn't prove to be the final solution in the end, I think it would be a good process for the community to start on and embark on. And who knows? Maybe this developer is the right developer.
Thank you.
Can I?
Absolutely.
I completely agree that we need housing, especially workforce housing and families' housing. We had a lot of families with young kids moving into town, so we need those types of housing. But going forward with this MOU, it will, I don't want to be committed to something that later we will regret it.
Thank you. So, regarding Leah and her team from True Life, we have vetted them. We know what other projects they've done. They're happy to make that public, spoken to other communities where they've done work, so not so much a concern on that. They can very easily, as two previous potential purchases of this property, what we're considering is they could very easily today, without permission, throw up 47 homes. They came to us and said, what are your interests and needs as a community? What are your desires? We can throw up some mansions and make our buck and go home, and that's the end of the day. So, we did say, okay, here's what our interests and needs are, like we do to everyone who comes to the city looking for development. And yes, they would have to come for permission, but it is zoned to do that. So, they have shown cooperation, flexibility, et cetera. There is, I think it's safe to assume, there is something that's going to be built on that property. It has been in play for quite some time. The family of generations needs to move on to the next stage of their life, and the property's going to transition. It is within the city limits. It's not ag-protected. Clarification from Lynn, under the current right-to-build legislation in the state of California, ADUs do they qualify as a right to build? So, if I buy a home on a one-acre parcel, and I build one home, is an ADU available as right to build?
In general, yes.
Okay. So, what that simply means, an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. And if you have, live in a current parcel anywhere in Calistoga, that is of size enough to put up a 1,200-square-foot maximum, an ADU, I believe?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. A 750-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, you can do so. And you get discounts on water and sewer hookups, et cetera, as part of the state's mandates on addressing the housing needs. So, as we sit here today, there could be 47 times two units on that parcel, the entire parcel. So, just things we need to take into consideration. I'm telling you what's allowed as of today. So, under the state legislation. I agree. I think 250 is a very large number. It's a very scary number. But appreciate the creativity and the mixed use and different types of product that could have been, could be considered on that. Weekenders, I know we all throw that around a lot, but as I scan this audience, and you know who you are, many people in this room, many people who are permanent residents of our community started as weekenders. So, that's not a bad thing. And there are people who desire to live in Calistoga, and that's not a bad thing. The fact that the entire Bay Area is the most population-dense region of the United States, we're all going to need to get used to the fact that more people are going to be moving here, whether it be in Calistoga or the surrounding community. But we do obviously need to take those impacts into consideration. So, at this point, I'm not prepared to move forward with an official MOU. If the property owner and the developer are interested in talking about other options or considerations for the parcel, we would be open to that. I have no problem with hosting community forums, which have worked out very well for topics such as this. Bring in the developer, potentially representative of the property owner, talk about, hey, what are the wishes, desires, and needs. There is absolutely no doubt that we have a significant traffic concern over at Petrified Forest and Foothill. So, that would also be something that they would have to take into consideration as well. So, with that said, I'm not going to call to question the motion, because I don't think, well, I know we don't have the support for it. So, with that said, we'll step off of that. Staff can reengage with Leah and her team and see if that's anything that works for them. And as a community, we're all open to having these discussions. But remember, we can't on one side say we all need housing, and then on every opportunity that presents itself, say, but not here. And I don't, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that this might not be the right parcel, or this might not be the exact right opportunity, but it is something we're going to have to seriously consider and address, because we're to a point now where all of our families and friends and our neighbors' families and friends are impacted and affected by this. Any other questions? City Manager Feek.
Can I, I just want to make a comment, which we talked about it a little bit earlier and didn't really go around. What I'm going to just speak a little bit about what Lynn has helped me understand, being fairly new to the city, how she goes about the development review process. So, the MOU document, what you have here, whether it was this project or any project, is not something that's subject to environmental review. So, when the city enters into this, it's really, it's a document that's a non-binding document that gives any developer, I'll call it a little bit of assurance, or, you know, that might be the wrong word, but that gives them something that the city has said, let's sit down and talk, as Councilmember Barnes said earlier. But now is, they actually begin the much more difficult process of putting together the project description of what's going to be there. This is just a conceptual plan. It could be fewer units, it could be two-story units, it could be single-story units, it could be a whole variety of things. So, the project could change. And when the city begins a development agreement discussion, not all projects we have to do a development agreement, but in this case, that's what they're asking for. A development agreement is a negotiation between the city and an applicant. A development agreement, just like a zoning amendment, just like a general plan amendment, are all required to go through an environmental review. So, staff spends a lot of time and effort, and we also partner with third-party professionals to go through that review process, to understand what the impacts are. Right now, staff does not know what the impacts of 250 housing units are on the intersection, on the environment, on the neighbors, because we haven't gone through that process. So, whatever project would come back, or a project on another parcel in town, staff would spend the time to go through that review, to make sure we understand what the impacts are. Those are, we present those findings to city councils, those become public conversations, public documents. So, I want to just emphasize that, that, again, even tonight in MOU, there's still a lot of things that, a lot of other steps in the process that we didn't really talk specifically about tonight. And, you know, myself being new to the city, two years now, many other people, there's a lot of that, those moving parts that we educate other people on all the time, as Linda did for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that said, we will adjourn this evening's meeting to, or actually get to adjourn to another special meeting if you'd like to stay. We will be adjourning to the special meeting of the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation to address an item earlier on the agenda. Thank you, folks. If you're going to move out, move out quickly, so we can move on. Kathy, you want this one on a different disc, or can continue? You can continue. All right, we are moving on to the next meeting. If you're going to converse, please do so outside of this room. I would like to call to order the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation meeting. It is Tuesday, April 17th, at 8:26 PM. Quiet, please. Thank you. City Clerk Flampson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. I will open oral communications. Anyone in the public interested in addressing the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation? Not seeing anyone move toward the podium. I will close oral communication and will seek a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, unless modification is requested. Anyone want to motion on the agenda, accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. General activities, consideration of adopting resolution authorizing the issuance of, issuance and sale of water and wastewater revenue certificates in the principal amount not to exceed $10 million to refund certain obligations of the city of Calistoga in approving related documents and actions. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented. Taking us to this is, I believe, City Manager Feek. Make it fast, Dylan.
Counsel, this is the same thing you discussed earlier. It simply has to be approved by both City of Calistoga and Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation Board, which is a separate entity for purposes of issuing debt. So, on the agenda tonight, the exact same item as was on the city council agenda earlier. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions of staff, public, any questions of staff? Closing public comment, bringing it back from consideration, we'll entertain a mo, yes, sorry.
What specifically are these certificates?
This was the item, the same item that was on the agenda previously, discussing the reissuance, reappraisal of the debt related to the water and wastewater systems that was approved and was open for public discussion earlier. We have 100, do you have that document, Kathy?
Item number six.
Item number six. It was item number six on the previous agenda.
So, these are bonds? They're certificates. How are they different from bonds?
It's, certificates of participation, that's the type of debt issuance that it is. It's different than, for example, a general obligation bond. For all intents and purposes, it is a bond. But it's different because a certificate of participation is covenanted to be paid back with revenues from your water and your wastewater systems. A general obligation bond, it would be an example where the city commits general revenues, that we say we have property tax revenues, sales tax revenues, that we are committing to pay off these bonds if they're ever in default. So, you're making a different commitment as a city, and the certificates of participation have been the way that the city has issued debt in recent years for our water and our wastewater infrastructure. And we're essentially saying our fee revenue will pay off the bonds, not our property tax revenue, our sales tax revenue.
Okay. And what's the length of these certificates? Or at what point, at what point are they paid off?
So, the city is refinancing four debt issuances. This was discussed earlier. Those four debts all have different maturity dates. When we issue one new debt issuance, the same four maturity dates will all be built into that debt issuance. So, after a couple years, you'll see that our total debt service amount drops down because we retire that debt. So, we're keeping the same schedules, we're just going to lower the interest rate.
Okay. Or was it an averaging of the four, of the four, the lengths, the terms of the four that are being consolidated?
No. There's no extension of the total term, and each one will expire during the, so whatever the oldest one was, the other three will expire during that period. So, we didn't basically just extend the amount of time or money we were borrowing, we're just consolidating it all.
And was it understood that this would happen at the, when you were, when Gary and Jim were working on a water rate hike or water rate study? Was that understood that we would be, that this would, there would be?
We understood that we would have the opportunity to refinance at a lower rate. This proposal is essentially what we had envisioned, but because we did not know how much we would actually save, we didn't put that amount of money as part of the equation that came on out. We came out, I think it's going to average $56,000 a year, which is about, I think, what we thought. It might be somewhere between $40,000, maybe as much as $60,000 or $70,000 at one point. But it is subject to our rating, which you must not have been here for that part. We got an A-minus rating, which is actually pretty good for us. So, there's certain interest savings that we get because we have a better rating, because we can show how we can meet the obligations of the notes. Besides making the annual payments on them, there's some obligations to have a 20% reserve to pay those notes in case of some kind of a problem with the collections, for instance. And so, it basically was calculated in, although the specific dollar savings, we had no way of knowing what it would be. But I think the $56,000 is right in the ballpark with what we thought it was going to be. And I've done a lot of the talking, but Jim certainly is a bigger numbers guy than I am.
Yeah, and Gary is correct, because we didn't know what kind of rating. Now have an A-minus rating, that the water rate increases would engender and bring us closer to parity. Now that we know that, that they've been finalized, we got our A-minus rating, so we can save $56,000 a year for the foreseeable, for the next 27 years.
And that savings was to be rolled into the capital improvements?
Correct.
I think that's where the crux of the question is, is where are these savings going?
All that money goes back into the water and wastewater funds. And another really good feature about redoing them like this, is COPs with our limited obligation bonds, and they're payable by us only from net revenues of the water and wastewater enterprises. And therefore, the city's general fund will not be exposed to repayment of the risk. In other words, if something bad happened, they can't come after our general fund to take it out. take it out of it. We can offer to take it out of the general fund, which we have done in the past, but it could have been taken from us. Now, it cannot be by the bondholders, the COP holders, excuse me. So, it gives us a little more legal protection. Not that we'd ever want to default, but dire things do happen.
Yes. What would be the instances that that would happen, that could happen?
That we would default?
How about an earthquake?
We have a serious collapse of an infrastructure due to an earthquake, a wildfire, we lose our water treatment plant.
Yeah, a fire could have gone down there.
Anything that would prevent, that would impact a significant capital expense or impact our ability to collect revenues from ratepayers.
Yeah, you saw what happened to Coffee Park. That could have just as well been us. And that fire was so bad, it burned the underground infrastructure, miles of it. That could have caused the default.
Mountain Grove's looking at a $46 million cost of rebuilding the water system up there. So, you want some examples? There you got them.
And so, this not only gives us great relief with the water rates, hopefully, it gives us more money to spend, and it gives us protection in a court of law. And we have a good rating now for the first time since I've been sitting here.
Okay, so, okay. And so, this is not about taking on any more debt?
No.
No. We actually reduce our debt load overall by 1.5 million dollars, so, by restructuring.
The only comment I want to make too about the debt savings is the reason we didn't publish all the schedules and all the numbers is their estimates being put together by our bond council and our financial advisor, which are conservative. What they do is they take your current rating as of today, which we didn't have prior to today, but they're also taking recent bond issuances, here's what we estimate. So, I actually believe that the numbers listed today are the most conservative numbers we see. It's very, there's good potential we could save more money. But really, all that it is, is we're reducing the interest rate on our debt, and current projections are saving 1.5 million dollars. Hopefully, we can save more. And I didn't make this comment earlier, but I'd make it now just for council, for you. The reason that we're tying all four issuances into one is because when these are municipal bonds, you have to go through certain processes to do it, and that can be expensive. So, if we do it once, we actually save a lot of money in issuance costs, which then come back to the ratepayers, they don't have to pay that in our annual debt obligation, our debt costs. So, one and a half million is a conservative estimate now. You know, we'll see what happens when they sell them here soon.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, you know, all I can say is I really am sorry that the public comment and those letters protesting the rate hike was short-circuited because there are many people who believe that there could have been different, there were, there definitely were alternatives to the rate hikes that you passed. And if that...
No viable, no viable options were presented. So, at that point, that decision was made.
In your opinion?
On our opinion, my opinion, the council's opinion, the experts' opinion, who do this every single day of their life. So, you know, at that point, we voted on this, so we've moved on.
Yep, I know. People do move on. And sometimes there are mistakes made that other people end up paying for later. Like, I just hear weekly now about people leaving town because they can't afford to leave here anymore. And I really didn't hear of that until, like, the past few months. I was not hearing weekly from people who cannot afford to live here anymore.
Which is why we were considering a housing project with higher densities that would make it more affordable, and everybody was against it, so.
Well, that sounds like it, but we also heard there were problems with that property right there, too. I mean, the people, the neighbors who live there know there are problems literally with the property.
Well, if you run into anyone in town relative to what we're speaking about here, which is this issuance relative to the water and sewer, if there's anyone you're coming across in town who is considering leaving because of the water and wastewater rate increase, this council has set aside funds, significant funds, outside of the wastewater and water treatment systems to help accommodate folks who are having challenges in meeting the new rates. So, please make sure they contact the city because that's what the fund is set aside for, to help accommodate them. Okay?
I hope that's enough to cover. Everyone needs it.
Thank you very much. I will close public comment, bring it back to the council for further consideration, and we'll entertain a motion as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will adjourn this to the next scheduled annual meeting of the Calistoga Public Facilities Corporation on Tuesday, July 17th. Is that right? Yeah, a couple of months away, okay. 2018. Thank you very much. And then, we'll move back to the regular city council meeting, which we will now officially adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is May 1st, 2018 adjourned. Thank you.